The sixth day of the third special session of the present Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Allick, Senator Armitos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Koolen, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo.
May my-
Senator Perman, Senator Romelow, Senator Orsmau, Senator Welly, Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, twelve members are present.
We have quorum to transact business today. Before we go on to next item, Chairman Orsmau is designated as acting floor leader. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Reading of the Journal, item four.
Acting four.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning, and I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item five, presidential communications. We have number twenty dash one sixty-seven.
Okay, assigned that, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, there are none also. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven? Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none also, Mrs. Speaker. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, there are none.
Order of the day, Mr. Speaker. Yes, acting four.
Thank you, Colonel. And, Mr. Speaker, I move, I rise on a point of privilege.
Proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. It is indeed an honor and a privilege for me, as your acting floor leader on our behalf, to introduce a lady sitting in the gallery observing our session this morning. May I introduce Mrs. Sherry Stott. The last name should be familiar to all of us. She is the mother of our staff attorney, Jesse Stott. Let's give her a big round of welcome. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, acting four. Yes, the Congress joins you in warmly welcoming Mrs. Stott for joining us this morning's session. Any other point of privilege? If none, next item is fourteen, standing committee reports. First report.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash forty-three on congressional resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight from your committee on ways and means for adoption.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the adoption of the said report.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash forty-three. Discussion. Short recess. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash forty-three, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Standing committee report number twenty dash forty-three is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash forty-four regarding congressional resolution number twenty dash sixty-nine from your committee on ways and means for adoption.
Chairman Figuerre.
Okay, Mrs. Speaker, move for the adoption of the report.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash forty-four. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash forty-four, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Standing committee report number twenty dash forty-four is adopted by Congress. Next report.
Mrs. Speaker, we have standing committee report number twenty dash forty-five on congressional bill number twenty dash fifty-four from your committee on ways and means conquering with the RND standing committee report twenty dash thirty-six for adoption.
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Rise for move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number twenty dash forty-five. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of standing committee report number twenty dash forty-five, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Standing committee report number twenty dash forty-five is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess.
Short recess, Speaker.
Congress back in session. We're still on standing committee report. Any more report, Chief Clerk?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item number fifteen, special committee reports, there are none.
Next item.
Item number sixteen, seminar measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty dash forty-two and a re-referral sheet number twenty dash six.
Okay, Chairman and members, take a look at those, the referral sheet twenty forty-two and re-referral sheet twenty dash six for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business, there are none.
Item eighteen, bill calendar, first bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash fifty-four CD one for first reading from your committee on ways and means. CP number twenty dash fifty-four CD one is a bill for an act to convert unpaid balances of prior loans from the national government of the federal states of Micronesia to the national fisheries corporation pursuant to public law number six dash sixty-nine and public law number nine dash seventy-eight into grants for the purposes for which such loans were provided and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move to defer action on the bill to tomorrow's calendar.
It's moved and seconded that the bill twenty dash fifty-four CD one be deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Those in favor of the motion, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Said bill is deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash one twenty-one for second reading. CP number twenty dash one hundred twenty-one is a bill for an act to amend sections nine and twelve of public law number twenty dash forty-two as amended by public law number twenty dash fifty-four to subdivide the section nine line item titled Conservation Society in each state and to name the governor of Chuk State as the alati for the Chuk State share of this line item and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passage of the said bill.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading CP number twenty dash one twenty-one. Discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Orsmau.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I believe I have some amendments that I wish to make on the bill. It's been written, duplicated, and distributed. May I ask the chief clerk to read it, Mr. Speaker?
Okay, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty dash one twenty-one offered by Senator Joseph J. Orsmau. CP number twenty dash one twenty-one is hereby amended to read as follows. Item one, on page one, title, line four, after the word "item," insert the following, and to name the governor of Yap State as the alati for the Yap State share of this line item. Item two of this amendment, on page eight, line ten, after the word "Chuk," insert the following, "and of which fifty thousand shall be for the Conservation Society in Yap." Item three of this amendment, on page eleven, line five, after the word "Chuk," insert the following, comma, "and for the share of funds from this line item for the Conservation Society in Yap, the alati shall be the governor of the state of Yap."
Speaker.
Motion for adoption.
Before I do that, Mr. Speaker, may I just offer a technical correction to the written form of my amendments?
Proceed.
Where it says, "Offered by, please delete abbreviation and insert in Luther of S N T R." Period. And the amendment is merely to, that's the official designation of an abbreviation for senator, not as written here. And the amendment, Mr. Speaker, is merely to state for the record that the state of Yap, share of this amount, this funding, the alati of that fund will be the honorable governor of the state of Yap. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I don't know what's the correct formal word for it, but we'll do as you requested. Since you've finished discussion, let's do your motion for adoption.
I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered floor amendments, with the technical correction, be adopted. The discussion.
Speaker.
Yes.
I'm-
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I'm a little bit confused as to the rationale of the changing the, or amending the alati from the president to the governor. I question the capabilities of my governor, whether he can implement this project. I would rather see that perhaps this is not a very large amount, although amount of fund, but the people are the authority that is in charge of the conservation authority or society in Yap, is the director of Yap Community Action Agency. I think it would be appropriate if that he be made the alati of the fund so that the fund can be used in the state or the society, the environment, people who are concerned in protecting our environment can move on. Otherwise, the fund is going to sit there forever. This is my personal observation, and I stand to be challenged with that observation. If somebody can say, "You're wrong, things are moving really fast in Yap," then I'll let my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Figuerre. So what do you say, Chairman Orsmau, he's wrong?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I thank the good chairman of ways and means for bringing the issue up. The effort here has, is twofold. One, if nothing is moving on this grant, fifty thousand, very small, the information passed by Congress to the leadership of Yap is, if any of this money not moving around, they will be put, they may be put into the trust fund, FSM trust fund, into Yap subaccount. So this is an additional money if it is truly not moving anywhere. On the issue of the alati, the executive director or director of Yap CA, Yap Community Action Program, all funds that have been previously appropriated for that entity, that agency, the governor has been the alati, and it is true, it's very disappointing, but we're hoping that with this Christmas and with this new year, 2018, we will stop all the operations, the NATO operations in the FSM, and start doing things instead of just no actions, talks only. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmau. So he doesn't agree with you, Chairman Figuerre, so. All right, any further discussion on the offered amendments? If none, if there is no objection, debate is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered amendments by Chairman Orsmau, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. The amendments are adopted. We now have CD one. Point of preference, Mr. Speaker. What was?
Point of preference, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, state your point, Senator Conman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to introduce two young ladies who are in this cabinet observing our session this morning. I would kindly ask that we give them a round of applause to Ms. Chinana Run and Ms. Nenade Ursaco. Thank you very much.
Well, those young ladies are indeed welcome to observe their Congress in action. Thank you for introducing them. Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to also introduce some individuals who are here. By the way, good morning to you and good morning to all members, those who are observing. We have two individuals who are here, Speaker, on our behalf. Let me introduce Dr. Casusa Permanis and Junior Permanis, who are also observing our session this morning. Can we kindly give him a round of recognition? Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, they are indeed welcome.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess being called for, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of CP number twenty dash one twenty-one CD one. Any further discussion?
Speaker, short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of CP twenty dash one twenty-one CD one. Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
With all due respect to my good colleague, chairman of the DNC Committee, I move to defer this bill to tomorrow's bill calendar. So move.
It's moved and seconded that CP number twenty dash one twenty-one CD one be deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Those in favor, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Said bill is deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash one twenty-two for second reading. CP number twenty dash one twenty-two is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash fifty-three as amended by public law number twenty dash fifty-seven by amending sections two, three, four, and five thereof to change the use and alati of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the states of Kuchai, Pompei, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
So move.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading CP number twenty dash one twenty-two. Discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Koolen.
Thank you, Speaker. I move to offer a floor amendment to CP dash twenty dash one two two. So move, Mr. Speaker. The reading amendment has been distributed to all the members.
Okay, Chief Clerk. You want to read that, Chief Clerk?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty dash one twenty-two offered by Chairman Victor Koolen. Item one of the amendment, it's on page eight, line seventeen, after the word "projects," insert dash, or whatever, current and prior applications or election and inauguration. Item two of the amendment, page eight, line eighteen, after the word "projects," insert slash, slash, current and prior applications, slash, election and inauguration. Item three of the amendment, on page thirteen, line twelve, delete the figure forty thousand and insert the figure twenty-five thousand in Luther off. Item four of the amendment, page thirteen, line fourteen, delete the figure two hundred fifty-five thousand and insert the figure two hundred thirty thousand in Luther off. Item five of the amendment, on page thirteen, line sixteen, delete the figure hundred sixty thousand and insert the figure hundred forty thousand in Luther off. And the last item, item six, page thirteen, between lines twenty-one and twenty-two, insert a new line item to read subsection lowercase s, seaport transportation needs sixty thousand.
Make your motion for adoption, Chairman Koolen.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's moved and seconded that the offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two by Chairman Koolen be adopted. The discussion.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress back in session, acting four.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I wish for the record to reflect that the rules, especially the one prohibiting substantive amendment on second reading, is suspended.
It's moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading, be suspended. Those in favor, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Those relevant rules are suspended. Discussion on the offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two by Chairman Koolen. Any discussion? Questions being called for, there's no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two by Chairman Koolen, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Those amendments are adopted. We have now, we now have CD one. Any further discussion on CD one?
Speaker.
Senator Ned.
Thank you. Likewise, I have a floor amendment, small one, for the same bill, and it has been distributed.
Okay, Chief Clerk, please read in the records.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty dash one twenty-two CD one offered by Senator Dion Chinet. Item one of his amendment, on page seven, line seventeen, delete fifty thousand and insert the figure sixty-five thousand in Luther off. Item two, on page seven, line twenty, delete fifty thousand and insert zero in Luther off. Item three, page seven, line, sorry, page seven, line twenty-five, delete the words Biella Conference participants. On page, I mean, item four, on page eight, line two, delete travel needs and insert libraries, comma, archives, comma, and museums, or LAMP, of Pompei hosting of twenty-seventh Annual Biella Conference. And the last item, item five, page eight, line five, delete the figure thirty-five thousand and insert the figure seventy thousand in Luther off.
Can you move?
Senator Ned. It's moved and seconded that the offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two CD one by Senator Ned be adopted.
Speaker.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I take it that the relevant rules are still suspended?
Yes, the, let the record reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. So, any discussion? Discussion. If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote on the offered floor amendments. Those in favor of the offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two CD one by Senator Ned, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. The offered floor amendments by Senator Ned are adopted. We have CD two. Any further discussion on CD two?
Speaker.
Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, I have proposed floor amendment to CP number twenty dash one two two. It's written, distributed for members, and I ask that Chief Clerk read. Thank you.
Okay, Chief Clerk, read that.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CP number twenty dash one twenty-two CD two offered by Senator David W. Panuelo. Item one of the amendment, on page six, line one, delete the figure fifty thousand and insert the figure ten thousand in Luther off. Item two, on page six, between lines four and five, insert the following, lowercase subsection W, Mataleni Municipal Inauguration, five thousand, and subsection lowercase x, Outport Motors slash Boat Repair dash Packen Community, thirty-five thousand.
Okay, let the record reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Any discussion on the offered amendments? Questions being called for, if there's no objection, discussion will be closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of floor amendments, of the offered floor amendments to CP number twenty dash one twenty-two CD two by Chairman Panuelo, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no. Motion carried. The offered floor amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two CD two by Chairman Panuelo are adopted. We now have CD three. Any further discussion on the CD three? Any?
Speaker.
Short recess. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of CP twenty dash one twenty-two CD three. Chairman Romelow.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you, and welcome back. I wish to offer a floor amendment to this eight bill.
Proceed.
On page twelve, line eleven, delete the amount thirty, insert the amount twenty in Luther off. Between line thirteen and line fourteen, insert prior year outstanding for Hals Junior High School, house father and house mother, and YOLAP employees. School, Halls' father and Halls' mother, and Yolap employees, ten thousand in lieu thereof. So move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Chairman Romelo be adopted. The relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Discussion. Any discussions on the offered oral amendments? If none, if there is no objection.
Yes. Yeah, I take it that the letter between line thirteen and fourteen, lines thirteen and fourteen, will be O in parentheses, and then the item stated by.
He didn't mention, so we'll just stick with what he.
Excuse me.
He did not mention any letter, but I'm sure.
But that's part of the amendment.
It's a technical thing for the staff to work on, okay? There is no further discussion, let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offered oral amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two, CD three, as offered by Chairman Romelo, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments to CP twenty dash one twenty-two, CD three, are adopted. We now have CD four. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed on CP twenty dash one twenty-two, CD four. So let's vote by delegation. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritos. State of Punpay, Chairman Panwell.
AMI.
State of Cochai, Chairman Alek. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmal. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
CP number twenty dash one twenty-two, CD four, has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess. Speaker. Congress back in session. We're still on the bill calendar. Chairman Kullen.
Thank you, Speaker. I move to withdraw CP twenty dash one twenty-five for the order of business for today. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress back in session. Chairman Kullen, restate your motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Restated my motion on the bills, Mr. Speaker, on CP dash one twenty-three, one twenty-four, and one twenty-five. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Let's move and seconded that the following bills, twenty dash one twenty-three, twenty dash one twenty-four, twenty dash one twenty-five, be withdrawn from committee and placed on the bill calendar for today's action. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Those bills are now placed on the bill calendar for action.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that the relevant sections and paragraphs and of our rules be suspended.
Let's move and seconded that the relevant rules that might impede our action on the motion be suspended. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. The relevant rules are suspended at this point. So, we now have one twenty-three, one twenty-four, and one twenty-five on the bill calendar for action. First bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one twenty-three for first reading. CB number twenty dash one twenty-three, it's a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number nineteen dash one twenty-four, as amended by Public Laws Numbers nineteen dash one thirty-three, nineteen dash one forty, nineteen dash one fifty, twenty dash zero five, twenty dash fifteen, twenty dash thirty-three, and twenty dash forty-eight, by amending sections four and six thereof to change the use and allottee of certain funds previously appropriated therein, appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other programs in the state of Punpay and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of the suit bill.
Let's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP number twenty dash one twenty-three. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of members. It's first reading.
Senator Alek.
Senator Figuer. Senator Kullen. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Panwell. Senator Perman. Senator Romelo. Senator Orsmal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semenah.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
CB number twenty dash one twenty-three has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number twenty dash one twenty-four for first reading. CB number twenty dash one twenty-four is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number eighteen dash eleven, as amended by Public Laws Numbers eighteen dash four to four, eighteen dash eighty-one, nineteen dash thirty-three, nineteen dash one oh six, nineteen dash one twenty-eight, nineteen dash one thirty-four, nineteen dash one thirty-eight, twenty dash eleven, twenty dash forty-nine, and twenty dash fifty-five, by amending section one thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Punpay and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of that bill.
Let's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP number twenty dash one twenty-four. Discussion.
First, Mr. Speaker. Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Back in session. We're on discussion of CB twenty dash one twenty-four.
Question.
You're good, Chairman Orsmal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, I, I am, I'm okay, maybe second reading.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to close debate. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. This is first reading. So, roll call of members. Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Alek. Senator Aritos. Senator Figuer. Senator Kullen. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Panwell. Senator Perman. Senator Romelo. Senator Orsmal. Senator Wally. And Speaker Semenah.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
Okay, for that reason, CP number twenty dash one twenty-four has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number twenty dash one twenty-five for first reading. CP number twenty dash one twenty-five is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number twenty dash sixty, by amending sections three, four, five, and six thereof, to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to funding, to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Cochai, Punpay, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Move for the passage of the bill.
Let's move and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP number one, twenty dash one twenty-five. Discussion. Any discussion? This is just fresh off the press, so.
Speaker. I have a oral amendment to this bill.
Can we do all the amendments tomorrow? Write them up, put them in writing, huh? Okay. There is no further discussion. There's no objection. Debate is closed, so let's vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, first reading.
Senator Alek. Senator Aritos. Senator Figuer. Senator Kullen. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Panwell. Senator Perman. Senator Romelo. Senator Orsmal. Senator Wally. And Speaker Semenah.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, twelve members voted for.
CP number twenty dash one twenty-five has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
There are no more, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item nineteen, resolution calendar. Mrs. Speaker, the first resolution is functional resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight for adoption from your Committee on Ways and Means, CR number twenty dash sixty-eight. It's a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of five million, five hundred thousand dollars from the World Bank in connection with the preparation of proposed World Bank finance projects, including the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Figuer.
So move, move for the adoption of the resolution.
And second, let's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight. Discussion. Short recess. Congress back in session. We're still on discussion of resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight, say yes. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty dash sixty-eight is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Chief Clerk.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, we have functional resolution number twenty dash sixty-nine for adoption from your Committee on Ways and Means. CR number twenty dash sixty-nine is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Interior, Office of Insular Affairs, to fund the FSM single audit for fiscal year 2017, as required under the amended compact, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Let's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number twenty dash sixty-nine. Discussion. Any discussion? Short recess, subject to the Chair. Back in session. We're still on discussion of resolution twenty dash sixty-nine. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number twenty dash sixty-nine, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Resolution number twenty dash sixty-nine is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress back in session. There's no other business under the resolution calendar. Next item.
Item twenty, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-one, miscellaneous communications. We have one, and it's number twenty dash eleven.
Signed that, Chief Clerk. Next item, miscellaneous business.
Twenty-two, miscellaneous business.
Speaker.
Any?
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that we go back to item fourteen.
Let's move. Seconded that we go back to item fourteen of our order of the day. That's the standing committee report. Those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We're now back on the standing committee report calendar. Chairman Orsmal.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess.
Short recess.
Subject to call of the Chair. Congress back in session. If there's no objection by Chairman Orsmal, we will go back down to item twenty-two. That's miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business? Uh, Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and members. Those who are observing the gallery, I think I might be coming down with the flu, so my attendance tomorrow might be questionable. But I, I wish to state for the record my view on CB number twenty dash fifty-four, which was deferred to tomorrow's calendar. And this is in regards to the proposed bill that would change the loans that Congress made to NFC into grants. And my issue with that is, I attended both committee hearings. It was jointly assigned, I think, to RND and Ways and Means. And the first committee hearing that was held by the Committee on RND, information available to members during that hearing was made available during the second hearing that Ways and Means had. And in that economic report provided by NORMA, it seems that we forego around nineteen to twenty million in revenue from all these concessions that we give to these fishing companies. And looking at the audit reports of NFC, their equity is in the negative. It's almost in the amount of the loans that we have given. So if we forgive that, it would put them in a better financial position. Now, my, my issue with that is, it's going to make them look more attractive to these foreign fishing companies, to enable them to enter into joint ventures with them, as they are doing now with Tyomikronesia and several other companies. And to me, it's becoming like a haven for them to boost their financial position while enabling these companies to get concessions. Now, to me, it seems as we're baiting or using as bait Marlins or big-eyed tuna to catch And to me, twenty million in forgone revenue does not justify these joint ventures that claim they create jobs and opportunities that I think are way less than nineteen and twenty million. In 2016, we forego, we did concessions that amounted to twenty-plus million. In 2017, we gave out concessions totaling nineteen million. To me, that's a huge and significant amount to toy with when we could really use that to go into our trust fund and other development projects that we may have. Because we are in need, despite the compact infrastructure funds and all these grants that the U.S. gives us, along with the already existing revenue, I think it is still not enough for us to meet our development goals when we're moving toward 2023. So I just wanted to voice my issue with the, the bill, the proposed bill that was deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses. You have some legitimate concerns. I think the overall amount is, you're correct, about nineteen million this year that we lost to concession. And of course, yes, NFC is one of those. But if I understand, NFC is the one that pays the highest among all the ones with concessions. But I think that's in the reports. Any other, yes, you want to continue? Any other, yes, you want to continue?
Vice Speaker?
You have pardon? Okay. Any other miscellaneous business? If none, for me, I just want to convey greetings from the bishop to members of Congress on his fortieth anniversary. And I'd like to thank Vice Speaker Moses and all of you for proceeding with the business of the Congress when I, when I was absent. And thank you for that. So there's no further miscellaneous business. Next items, announcements. Chairman Figuerre?
Chairman Alik? Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Your Committee on Health and Social Affairs will, again, Wednesday at 2:00 P.M. with Social Security. Anything I should do with Social Security, please do show amendments and other.
Take note, members of HSA Committee, you have that hearing with Social Security issues. Chairman Romelo? Chairman Panuelo?
No announcement, Speaker.
Chairman Kullen?
Thank you, Speaker. Again, just to remind all members that the Chuk delegation will be hosting a party tomorrow at QBIT at 6:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kullen, for that announcement. Chairman Orsmal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. With the announcement made by the Chairman of DNC Committee, I would like to announce that the contribution from your Committee on Education is hereby withdrawn to that party. Mr. Speaker, there is no announcement from your Committee on Education, except I'd like to announce that certain copra producers in the state of Yap are still awaiting payment of the copra that were picked up in March 2017 and taken over to somewhere else, but have not totally been compensated for the hard work that they did. So with that, no other announcement on E, except for C, copra.
Thank you, Chairman Orsmal. The appropriate chairman will take note of that concern from our copra producers in Yap. I think it's, it's not nice to have these hardworking people go uncompensated for such a long time. We need to look into those. Okay, Chairman, I mean, Vice Speaker Moses, you have any announcement? Senator Net? Senator Aritos? Where is Senator Conman? Okay. Acting floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that this Congress stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 o'clock in the morning.
It's moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning. Those in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning.